2025. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Donnie Filippo of Gospel Center Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come to you today in the name of Jesus. We thank you for your mercy and grace. Thank you for giving us wisdom. You said, if any like wisdom, that all we have to do is ask. So, Father, we ask for wisdom for our city. Thank you for those that are willing to serve our city, this great city of Beaumont. We pray for the protection over them and their family. We pray, God, that you give them the wisdom for the year that is ahead of them, that they may accomplish the things that you would like to see done for our great city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, we have four proclamations and one presentation. And for those that are here for the proclamations and recognitions and would like to take pictures, please allow the city to get theirs first.
Mayor, can we do roll call before?
Yes, I skipped that, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Two meetings in a row. Is that, it must be not. May I have roll call, please?
Amen. Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to get to the four proclamations and one presentation. And first, we have a proclamation recognizing June 26, 2025, as Babe Saharius Day. Accepting will be Dr. George Grimes, President of the Babe Saharius Foundation Board, and Babe's nephew. Is Dr. Grimes in the house? Oh, come on up, please, sir. Stand right here, we'll get a picture real quick. She'll take it right there.
All right, just look right here. Ready? And one, two, three. Got it.
If you'd like to say a few words, feel free. If not, it's okay. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of June as Men's Health Month. Accepting will be Mrs. Norma Sampson, Executive Director of the Gift of Life, Ms. Regina Rogers, if she's in the house, and any of the other members that are here. Please come forward.
Okay, first here. And one, two, three. Okay, stay there, one more. One, two, three. Got it.
And she does give us permission to say that. Not every lady likes to have their age. And well, thank you for this opportunity, again, as always, with your support of our Men's Health program. As many of you know, we'll be providing our free life-saving services throughout southeast Texas, and importantly, we'll be in Beaumont on July 19. And these services have actually impacted the lives of more than nearly 100 men who receive our free care. Included in these free screenings, we've provided you with our little flyer that has the dates and the locations, and we ask for everyone to please share this information. We have opportunities for men to get checked and have the opportunity, again, to see physicians on site, as well as have all of these healthcare services provided at no fees. Thanks to individuals, businesses, and the CDBG fundings that we receive, we're able to provide these services. So, men's lives are touched. We allow them to have an opportunity to get educational information. And as you know, most men don't like to go see a doctor or get healthcare, so we kind of incentivize them. We have a $25 Jason's Deli gift card. There's a raffle for a grill. They get a free lunch and lots of hugs. So, thank you for your support. Dora Nisby is our Officer of our Gift of Life Board of Directors, and she has been with us, providing outreach and encouraging men to take advantage of our free services, as well as our Founder and Chair, Regina Rogers. Would you all like to make a comment?
I just feel very blessed to be a part of this organization and have been since its inception. And I personally want to thank the City Council and all the people that, throughout the city, who support the Gift of Life, because the Gift of Life is a special blessing to our cities, especially to our men who are reluctant to take care of themselves, and we encourage all men to go and get examined. And if you're examined and you get a bad report, the Gift of Life will take care of you. I'm just honored and blessed to have been a part of the Gift of Life, and I pray that I'll still be here next year. And so, I'll be telling you, come on and get tested.
Thank you, Dora. You will be here, there's no doubt about that, because we're going to be celebrating our 100th. Thank you all so much. Norma mentioned the impact. She mentioned the number 100, those of the men who've been diagnosed with prostate cancer. We screened, last year we screened over 812 men, is that right? 13? Throughout four areas, but there were 200 in Beaumont. And it was a very successful, wonderful gathering with a lot of compassion and love. And this is for men who would ordinarily not be able to receive medical care, because either they have no insurance or they have high deductibles. And Dr. Gwendolyn Lavalley is our Medical Director. She has been detained, she will probably be walking in at any moment, but I can just say that we are so lucky to have her overseeing a group of Baptist hospital residents and a number of other doctors who volunteer their services. So, it's a battery of tests worth about $500, and we're so grateful to be able to provide it. Thank you all so much for caring and sharing your resources. Thanks.
I just want to add.
So, let's get tested.
I do just want to say one thing, if I could. I know Ms. Dora said exam, I just want to clarify, it's just a lab test. There are, you know, there's no really physical examinations, it's just a simple lab, you know, test on all of these primary care in addition to the PSA. So, you can come in, make an appointment, we accept walk-ins, and really, you can come and get in and get out within 30 minutes. So, it's a seamless way, again, to have early detection is certainly the best protection.
And Brad Klein, many of you know him, is our Honorary Chair. He is a prostate cancer survivor. We have many prostate cancer survivors in this city, many, many, and we're so grateful to have them participate with us. I know we have some in the room. I won't embarrass them or ask them to come up, but they are very, they're great advocates for us, and we're very grateful.
Hold on one second, please.
Yes, sir.
I myself am a prostate cancer survivor because of early detection. I'm a two-time cancer survivor. That's the reason I'm here, because like my wife say, I go to the doctor if I sneeze. That's the reason that I'm still here, because of early detection, because I got a PSA test every year. And so, I just wanted to thank y'all.
Thank you, and that's the message. It's really for all men. Regina mentioned that it's truly, a lot of, a lot of people have a marketplace health insurance, but they can't afford the deductibles, and so they don't get the simple labs. So, this is an opportunity, again, where you have a chance to come in and get a $500. Yeah, and you probably know Chief Earl White as a prostate cancer survivor. So, thank you for sharing that. So delighted to hear that you're doing well. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. And earlier, I rushed through the Babe Saharius Foundation Board. They're going to come forward now to get a picture with the council. So, if y'all would like to come forward at this time.
How you doing?
Sorry, I didn't invite y'all up earlier. There you go. All right.
Well, again.
There you go.
Hey, again.
Austin, how are you?
If y'all want to turn around right here and get in the middle, we'll get a picture of all y'all. Right, scooch in a little bit. There we go. Okay, ready?
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing June 21, 2025, as the Alpha Psi Sigma Alumni Chapter of the Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority, Inc., SWIM 1922 Water Safety Clinic Day. Accepting will be Supriya Flowers, Anessa Washington, Shamika Turner, Bobby Williams, and Sylvia Edwards, if y'all would come forward now. And anybody else that is with y'all. Who wants to grab this right here? Congratulations. Yes, ma'am. How are you? Congratulations. Thank you. You might stay up here, because we'll get. Congratulations.
Hello. On behalf of the Alpha Psi Sigma Alumni Chapter of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the City of Beaumont for recognizing our SWIM 1922 initiative with an official proclamation. Your support highlights the importance of water safety and drowning prevention in our community, and we are honored to be acknowledged for our efforts to provide access, awareness, and life-saving education through this impactful program. Thank you for standing with us as we continue to make a difference, one swimmer at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our last proclamation is recognizing the 30th anniversary of the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center, which is a jewel in our city. And accepting will be Mr. Stacy Lewis, Senior, City of Beaumont Community Liaison Division Manager for the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center, and Mr. Donald Falk, Superintendent.
Just a word. So, Mayor and Council, and if I was in church, I'd say to Angela of this house, to our manager, Mr. Williams, staff. And 30 years is a long time. 30 years is a long time. Certainly, we are appreciative of the proclamation, the recognition, and Donald and I, we're just two cogs in the wheel that happened to keep the place rolling. But they had people who cleaned toilets, sweep floors, pick up trash, cut the grass, administrations that came before, the one that's in front of you today. And so, I believe everyone had a little piece in the proverbial pie to make this thing keep rolling on. Want to say this real quick and get out of here. The, the brain trust behind this, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Sterling Pruitt, and I'm sure Tracy's going to come with some more information and data, but it was about 1992 when the wheels started rolling, and I was volunteering in the school district, and we were opening Major Jones Clark, which was Bowie in the city's north end. I said that to say this, that it was the height of, of a gang era. You know, it was really, really bad at a particular time, and it was the introduction of crack cocaine to Beaumont, Texas. And so, the, with those thoughts in mind, that kids needed a different look, another avenue of approach to channel some of that energy. Say to this council again today, it may not be crack cocaine, but we still need avenues of approach and places to channel that energy. Appreciate your time. Thank you, y'all. Pray for us. Bless you all. Bye.
Yes, ma'am.
He did not speak, and he has some varied remarks. Please, he drove in from Austin.
Thank you. My patients don't listen to me, but they pay me, so, okay. First of all, I am the, I guess, President of the Board of Babe. And again, she was my man, so, I have a code. That's what this is coming from, right? Collect this. Anyway, we are very touched by having this, and it's just unbelievable, so we like it. And it is, we're 100% behind it. Everybody's talked about it, and anything we need to do, let us know, because y'all have done everything you can do.
Question?
Questions, comments?
I think there's more coming.
Do you agree with that?
I'm looking for Austin, but I don't know where. Austin? I should not be up here. The Board of Directors of the Foundation greatly appreciates your designation of June 26, her 114th birthday, as Babe Saharius Day in Beaumont. We know this honor would be especially significant to his Aunt Babe, because it comes from the heart of her hometown. Beaumont was always the city she was proud to claim, the place where she got her first taste of success. She returned here whenever her schedule will allow. On behalf of Babe, he would like to extend a personal invitation to each of you to enjoy a visit to the Babe Saharius Museum. It's close, it's free, but more than that, it tells her story and underlines her steadfast belief that you can accomplish anything you set your mind to. She did just that. Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And now, we have a presentation from the City of Beaumont Communication Department, Ms. Tracy Kinnick.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. In this week's announcements, our summer movies in the park series is back. These are free, family-friendly movie nights happening at different parks throughout the city. Bring your blanket or lawn chair, enjoy a movie under the stars. And first up, this Friday, June 20, head to Wuthering Heights Park to see Captain America: Brand New World. Next Friday, catch Beetlejuice at Rogers Park. All movies start at dusk, and they are free and open to the public. Go Skate Day is happening this Saturday, June 21, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Beaumont Skate Park. That's next to the Lakeside Center downtown. We'll have live music and free skating for all ages. Whether you're a skateboarder or just looking for a fun evening out, it's a great way to enjoy downtown. We're also continuing our work on the 2025 bond planning process, and your input is vital. Here's how you can get involved. The next Bond Committee meeting is June 25, and it is open to the public. A virtual open house will be available from July 4 through July 13, and we'll host an in-person open house Saturday, July 12, from 10 to noon at the Lakeside Center Meeting Room. You can find more information on the city's website or at beaumontbonds.com. This year marks the 30th anniversary of the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center. Mr. Pruitt grew up in Kansas at a time when racial discrimination kept him and other children of color from using the local activity center. That experience left a lasting impression, and when he became the Assistant City Manager of the City of Beaumont in 1990, he saw a chance to ensure that no child in our community would face the same exclusion he once did. Pruitt helped secure a Community Development Block grant to build a $2.6 million center. 30 years later, the Pruitt Center is a vibrant hub where thousands of children and teens enjoy free access to open gym, fitness programs, enrichment activities, sports leagues, and after-school programs. Take a look.
Tracy Kinnick with the City of Beaumont. We want to tell you about the Sterling Pruitt Center. If you don't know, this might be one of the best cab secrets in the city. We don't want that to be the case anymore. So, when the kids are trying to figure out what they're going to do this summer, there's some great opportunities. Right over here, there's a pool. This is one of two pools in our parks around the city, and you want to come check it out over the summer. It's going to be a hotspot as things start to heat up around southeast Texas. But inside, there's a lot of free activities as well. We also have a brand-new youth rec basketball league. Right over here, we have a pool room that kids can check out. When there's not another activity going on, you can always go inside here and play a little bit of pool, and then right across from there, a great workout room, so keep them busy, maybe if they want to stay in shape during the summer.
I just really like basketball. Like, I love playing it. It's my life.
Okay, are you excited about the new league?
Yes, ma'am, I'm super excited.
Uh, this is my first year. I feel like this is giving me more exposure to play and see where my talent sit right now.
Okay, so, look who we caught up with inside, Mr. A.J. Turner with the City Council. So, the City Council, very instrumental in getting this program started. Tell me about it.
Man, it took a few years to actually get it going. Our focus was to get more youth engagement, get these kids something positive to do once they get out of school, burn off some of their energy and get home to their parents.
My team is super fun. Like, they, they're always excited.
This is my favorite activity. I played football. That was my first year. I did good in that, but this is my first. I love this.
We need to do a better job with our youth. I think we kind of often don't give our youth positive things to do and positive environments. These are kids who, parents might be at work, they're in a positive environment with coaches, referees, doing something different than what they can be doing at home on their own.
And I love that these programs are free, so it excludes nobody, right? You don't have to have the money to come and participate in these great activities.
Yes, sir. Not only free to play, but it's free for the parents to come in and support their kids, and I think that's key.
So, it is programs like this at the City of Beaumont trying to implement, get things going for our youth in the community, make it a positive environment for our youth across Beaumont.
I loved how he said the Sterling Pruitt is going to give him more exposure. And we want to add that during the summer, kids can attend summer camp, summer track, aquatics, and volleyball, all at the Sterling Pruitt. So, check out their Facebook page for all the information, the great facility we have there. We hope you enjoyed the city's Juneteenth celebration last Saturday, and a reminder, city offices will be closed this Thursday in observance of the holiday. We encourage everyone to reflect on the significance of the day and to recognize the importance of freedom, equity, and inclusion in our community. Looking ahead, don't miss our annual Fourth of July celebration that's coming up Friday, July 4, at the Downtown Event Center and Lake. Gates open at 5 with live performances and food trucks. The Symphony of Southeast Texas performs at the Julie Rogers at 8, and then the largest fireworks show in southeast Texas begins at 9 o'clock. And finally, remember, not everyone enjoys loud celebrations, including our veterans, our pets, and your neighbors. And a reminder, lightning, or, sorry, lighting fireworks in the city limits is against the law. Violating the ordinance could result in a $200 fine and having your fireworks confiscated. Also, firing a gun into the air during celebrations, not only dangerous, but also a Class A misdemeanor punishable by a fine of up to a year in jail and a $4,000 fine or both. Let's keep our celebrations safe, respectful, and fun for everyone. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Now, for those that were here for the proclamation or the presentation, and you would like to leave, now is the time to do so, but we do have a swearing-in coming soon. At the close of the meeting today at City Council, we'll recess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code, to wit specifically the Project Riverfront and Downtown Hotel Project. Consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter and the Beaumont Professional Firefighters, Local 399 intervenors versus City of Beaumont Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Roy West, Earl White, Taylor Neal, Mike Getz, Odwin Samuel, Charles Durio, Albert Turner, and Randy Fellshaw. Calls number B210244. Now, we're going to move into public comments. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda or regular agenda items, one or two, or any other topic. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself nor council can respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from our office will contact you.
Eddie, and I think it's Doron, 5595 Gale Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
You already said my address, so I don't need to do that again, so. I've been living in Beaumont for about, since 2017, and started in 2020. They, the city fixed a sewer overflow down Gale Drive where I live, and ever since then, since this is 2025, it's gotten worse. Every time it rains, I cannot flush my toilet. Every time it rains, I cannot flush my toilet. So this has been ongoing for about five years, but it's gotten worse. Uh, the storm water must be seeping into the sewer system or something like that. So my presence here might help out more than just sending an email or something like that. So I just want to let you know my concerns, and I hope it's yours, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor West, Council, Mr. Williams and staff. My name is Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive, 77706. Welcome back, Mayor West. Close call. I want to thank, uh... Hold it down, please. I want to thank all the council for your, your service. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. We've had our share of rainfall, thunder, and lightning these past several days. Let's see, Babe Zaharias. Oh, yes, back in my day, it was Babe Dietrichen. And she was, uh, known to be a, I think, a hurler in the Olympics when I was a kid. And then later on, she became Babe Dietrichen Zaharias, and she was a golfer. So until she passed away, she was, she was, and was a golfer and played the tournaments in Beaumont. Sterling Pruitt Center, that's great. That's, uh, that's wonderful for the kids to have, uh, out, have school activities and the summer activities. And the, uh, swimming pools are, are great. I don't hear anything about, uh, uh, swimming lessons. Uh, the city somehow should try to work into swimming lesson for kids. I want to thank all the employees of, for their daily service to our town. I'm happy to see the City Channel 4 back on. It's very interesting, good interviews. Remember, it's a wonderful world, and to everyone, have a nice week, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Erin Reynolds, Jr., 6945 Salida Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm here again today, um... Asking to meet with the mayor and some council persons. I was informed by the City Attorney that I was not allowed to be in the council executive session. My purpose, again, was to refute and correct the false statements that were presented. I have provided information that confirms that the fire marshal colluded with the bondsman for Watashi Construction. The attempt is to not pay a $4.3 million claim. I made an open records request to determine three things. Number one, if folk homeless plumbing had pulled a permit after being paid $100,000. After the conversations that the plumber had with the fire marshal, he did not. Why didn't the fire marshal insist on a permit being pulled? The fire marshal knew that the plumber had a contract to install fire hydrants. The stop-work order was the result of the fire hydrants not being installed. The temporary fire hydrant was installed under the fire marshal's guidance, but yet no permit was pulled. If any licensed plumber pulled a permit, I found that none had been pulled during that period of time. If anyone had done an open records act or request on 3680 Main Road to get the pictures that the plumber provided to the State Board of Plumbing, no one made that request. The City Attorney Office sent a letter requesting, um, clarity on a previous request. That's when I learned that the open records request was through the City Attorney Office. My request was to get information on who requested information at 3680 Main Road. I made another request for the phone records of the fire marshal. Surely you would want to know if the fire marshal engaged in conversations with the bondsman and the plumber. Surely you want to know if the fire marshal violated any kind of act. Uh, my request was for the records of January 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. What was given to me does not include the dates requested, and what was given, the phone numbers were redacted. Why? They don't want me to know whether or not the fire marshal engaged in those conversations. In the previous council, there were two councilmen who were attorneys. Why not reveal the numbers to the cause? The City Attorney's Office did that. The City Attorney's Office is covered, is covered in the fire marshal.
Thank you, sir.
You got the rest of it in your hand.
Jimmy Pete, 2398 Goliath, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I was born in Beaumont, Texas in 1959, very good year. Left when I was nine and a half, and 55 years later, I've just moved back. Uh, just wanted to mention, uh, something regarding the issue of gaming. I might be a little late, but I know you're going to consider, look at your minutes today. Something I didn't hear mentioned when a bevy of gentlemen back here, uh, who were businessmen who were supporting, trying to support their opportunity, their solidarity, trying to support their opportunity, continue gaming. And what I wanted to mention was, you know, in many metropolitan cities, you've got a problem of, uh, great abundance of liquor stores in economically depressed neighborhoods, uh, but a sad scarcity of produce markets, public works, projects, and financial institutions. And so in your considerations about, I'd heard someone mention possibly rubber stamping. I'm hoping, I'm hoping I didn't hear in perpetuity someone's ability to have game rooms. But in your consideration, I, I hope you would think about the specific location in which these game rooms operate. Uh, I suspect that there aren't many, aren't any on streets like Thomas or Gladys where the marvelous Christmas decorations are. So I'd like you to have that in mind, the economic viability of the community. Consider that in your placement or allowing placement of game rooms in our city. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon to the City Manager, Mayor, council members, and administrative staff. My name is Addie Allen, 9695 Gross. I think the last time that I stood before you, I asked the question if the citizens have to say their name, their address when the roll is called. Why not our council members so that your constituents will know where you are? I have not received any kind of information in response. The other reason I'm standing here is two Tuesdays, and thank God the weather looks good right now. But I have asked that we consider a sirene in the city. Yesterday, I did not know, other than water divulging on my house, that we were under severe flood warning. In our evacuation plan, I've been told 311, I did not get a call. Thank God for national alert system. So I don't understand why the city has not moved on this. I even brought a proposal two years ago on companies that will do alarm systems. Just look at it. Maybe talk about it. Let us know that you're concerned about this issue. So I'm asking, again, standing here, if we had to evacuate yesterday, there were streets that were flooded, people were without lights, may still be. So are we evacuation ready? So I'm asking to hear something from the city on those two proposals that I presented, and it was given to the city manager. So, um, that's why I'm standing here. I appreciate your service because I know that you have a lot on your plate. But the citizens deserve to have some kind of notification because telephones go out, cell phones go out, TVs go out, cable goes out, and what else we know go out? The lights are dangerous because the four-way, and we got all kind of construction. So if we had to evacuate, how would we be notified? Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, at this time, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna have the oath administered, and I'm gonna ask Judge Brannick to come forward.
You're gonna have the reading of item number one.
Oh, yeah. Item one.
Sorry, Sheree.
Thank you. City Manager, uh, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you're ready for this, but we have to follow protocol.
That's right.
Item one, council to consider approval of an ordinance canvassing the results of the June 7th, 2025 runoff election. City Court.
The canvassing totals are as follows. Robin Mouton, 6,271 votes with a 49.19%, and Roy West, 6,478 votes, 50.81%. Thank you.
Is there a motion for item number one? Make a motion. Is there a second? Second. There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one.
I'm hoping that motion is to approve, Councilman Higgin.
Motion to approve.
And it's seconded by?
Ladonna.
Thank you.
We're gonna get it, we're gonna get it right at some point today. Uh, so there has been a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, at this time, we'll administer the oath. And, uh, also, uh, we're gonna have a 10-minute recess, and I'll set my timer on my phone for a little reception in the lobby after that, and then we will meet back in here for item number two.
We sit right here.
Raise your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Roy West, do solemnly swear...
I, Roy West, do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of mayor of the City of Beaumont, Texas...
Of mayor of the City of Beaumont, Texas...
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
Constitution and laws of the United States...
And of the state of Texas...
And of the state of Texas...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations. And then you have your statement of office, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, government, probably.
Let's get a quick picture with the fam here. Tracy, if you don't mind. Recession till... Recession till 2:25. May we have roll call, please?
For those of you who are in the audience, the meeting is resuming, so I need you to remain in decorum. Please have a seat and be quiet.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I said the meeting is resuming, so we ask that you please return to your seats and lower your voice. Thank you.
May we have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard, absent. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. Councilmember Crenshaw, absent.
All right, is there a motion? And we're moving to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Some move to approve.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Durio.
We'll quickly, I guess, Councilman Hilliard. One of your appointees, I don't know if it's same one, but is he a employee of the city of Beaumont?
You'd have to clarify which one.
It's on the, 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 um, TDBG.
Can you just say the name?
Josh Davis.
You know if he's a city employee?
The one I know.
Okay.
He asked the question needs to be addressed on the record so we can close it.
Are you aware if that's a city employee?
No. No, I don't believe he's a city employee.
It's a common name, all right. Any other, any other discussion on the consent agenda items? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution appointing members to the audit committee, and the resolution is recommended for approval.
All right, is there a motion for? And the motion will require names and ending term, which we have on the screen as well. So we need a motion with the names. And who are we looking to appoint?
Taylor Neal.
No. Replacements.
But the motion would be to approve one of your sitting councilmembers for a term ending as follows.
Can I give a bit of an overview, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Can we explain it?
Yeah, the city has an audit committee that oversees audit process and gets reports from the auditors before the report submitted to council. In the past, we had three members on that audit committee. It was our councilmember Taylor Neal, Mike Getz, and councilmember Turner, A.J. Turner. Of course, councilmember Neal and Getz are not here anymore, so we really need to replace the two of them on this committee. If councilmember Turner's gonna serve and be reappointed, but that's where we are. We're just reappointing this committee. You meet about two or three times per year. And so, mostly during audit time.
We just recently had a meeting on that, so.
To the city manager's point, it's only to replace Councilman Neal and Councilman Getz. Councilman Turner's appointment is still good. So it would be to place the term ending on October 15th, 2025, which is held by Councilman Neal, and to replace the term ending on October 15th, 2026, which is held by Councilman Getz.
All right, Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Roy West and Councilmember Warren Corey Crenshaw to fulfill the expiring terms.
Which for which?
Corey Crenshaw will take, Councilman Corey Crenshaw will replace Taylor Neal, and Mayor Roy West will replace Mike Getz.
So that would be Councilman Neal will be, term expires on October 15th, 2025, and Councilman Getz' term expired on October 15th, 2026.
Correct.
All right, is there a second for approval?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. As read, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. And we're gonna move through councilmember comments at this point. So I will start with Councilman Crenshaw. I think last time I got Councilman Durio, right? No, I didn't. That's why, Councilman Durio, man going to vacation later today.
Only thing I want to say is thank staff and Emily for the Juneteenth celebration. I think moving it indoors was a great out, great idea, and I think it should stay indoors. But a good time was had by all. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hilliard.
I first like to say congratulations, Mayor West, on a, on a hard-fought victory. I would also ask if we can look into Mr. Reynolds Jr.'s request. Can we kind of see what's going on there? And also, Ms. Allen, you know, that's quite a concern. You know, there's a lot of elderly people, and being able to make sure in the event of a catastrophe that they could, they could get out and maybe find some way of early notification, or maybe, you know. But I think it's wise. There were a lot of streets that were flooded, and it could have been bad, so. But other than that, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilman Turner.
Well, happy early Juneteenth to everybody. Shout out to our seasoned citizens that paved the way to give us the opportunity to have some of the things and be in some of the positions we currently have. I take extreme pride in, you know, continuing legacy and doing everything I can to support those who came before me. So much respect to Juneteenth. Staff, you did an amazing job at the Juneteenth Festival. We got some good feedback in it being outside, I mean, inside versus outside. And I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July. Let's just keep the events going. Community engagement is important. I want to shout out the Beaumont Renegades. As, as rough as yesterday was with the storm, we got a little light at the end of the tunnel with our team actually winning the championship. So shout out to Beaumont Renegades. I'm more than confident we'll celebrate them soon as a council. And Mr. Williams, we spoke recently about going over our flood plan. If we can kind of get that on the agenda soon, in reference to some of the things was Addie Allen spoke on. I know we go over it every year, but with the season kind of starting, I like to kind of get that in front of the citizens so they can be more informed. And lastly, congratulations to my mayor. I'm not gonna say what Mr. Krav said. But, but congrats, man. You done a great job. I'm looking forward to working with you for more in the future. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, congratulations to you. I look forward to serving with you, and I've enjoyed it so far. So I'm excited to continue that. And, you know, Sunday was, was Father's Day, so I just want to take a, you know, again, to tell my dad Happy Father's Day, and just to all the dads in this room. It's, there's a lot of things in my life that, that I enjoy and cherish, and I love serving the city. But being a dad is the favorite thing that I, I get to do. And so to all the dads out there, Happy Father's Day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sherwood.
Well, first, thank you, city staff, and everybody that's working real hard to make us look good. I appreciate that. I heard very good things about Juneteenth, so I'm excited about that. Happy Juneteenth early. It's an important part of who we are to celebrate that holiday. It means a lot to me. I'm also glad to be back home. And while we didn't win our 13U World Series, I did remind the young men that it's important to win and lose with grace. So shout out to the Beaumont Renegades because we need to win. I appreciate that. I also want to remind everybody that it's okay to be good. We can all be found doing good, for goodness sake. And remember, integrity is what you do when nobody's watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Crenshaw.
Yes, again, congratulations, Mayor West, on your reelection. And I would also like to echo the, the comments of Councilman Williams on Father's Day, and Happy Father's Day belated to all the dads out there. And today is my dad's birthday. And so happy birthday to Dad. I'm sorry I missed lunch because we were getting ready for this meeting. But, and also, happy early Juneteenth to everyone in our great city that will be celebrating that holiday coming up on Thursday. And the only other comment that I would like to make is I was disappointed that this agenda did not have the gaming ordinance back on it after it was tabled two weeks ago. So I would just ask that we get that back on the next agenda meeting, please.
Thank you, Councilman Crenshaw.
On the agenda for July 15th?
Great.
And I just want to ask council to go upstairs expeditiously for executive session.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Molly?
Sorry, City Attorney has a brief announce, brief, brief announcement. So yesterday's rain event is one that has piled on from Thursday's rain event. So looking at some of the statistics, when we got the heavy rains on Thursday, they were on the magnet, you know, they were of significance on Thursday. So I don't know. you know, they were of significance on Thursday. So I don't know how many realize that the country club area received four inches of rain in 30 minutes. So that is an exceedingly intense rain for our area, par on the course of these flooding disasters that you see in other areas. We benefit from the fact that our terrain is so flat that it does not run off with that high velocity, causing injury and loss of property and loss of life. So that has been where the ground has really started to saturate. The ground really was able to absorb that rainfall event. The, the delays in traveling on these roads that are designed to convey this rainwater was not as long lived, but overall, the rains on Thursday did last about two hours. So we had the rain on Saturday, you know, and then the rain on yesterday, with smaller rain events happening in between. All that to say that the ground is saturated, is starting to really saturate. So now, the rain that we had yesterday, based on the National Weather Service tracking their data, Beaumont received from about the airport, Westbrook area, anywhere from three and a half to nearly five inches of rain, and most of that happened again in about a 30 minute period. So again, an exceedingly intense rain event that is unusual for this time of year. I won't throw out the, you know, how many year storm, because that, that's a whole different conversation. I don't like the way they describe it, but it would be a, what we would be, in any given year, you would have a 2% chance of seeing that type of rain event. So it was not a typical summer rain, and so I just really want to emphasize that. If there are areas that are still seeing water that is not draining off, we need to know about that, because what I did, I did see is although the underpasses did flood, they were overwhelmed by this intense rain. They recovered, they recovered within an hour to two hours of when the rain struck, and so that shows that they are, that they are functioning. The, the large ditches, our partners at Drainage District Six, their, their channels did carry off the water once the water reached them, but it's getting that water to those ditches. I'm wrapping it up, Sheree, I promise. I'm landing the plane. So, but please, if you have, when there are photographs of the flooding or concerns about flooding, please notify 311, because what's important to us is not just the location, addresses are always helpful, but the time, because that tells us, that helps us identify the intensity of the rain, just so that we have that data for our future design plans. So I just ask for that information in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Bean?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, I want to congratulate you on your reelection as mayor, and I also want to thank our county clerk who's left the building, but I wanted to thank her and her staff for a great job they did to make our elections, the general and the runoff, a great election. So I just wanted to thank her. That's it.
Thank you. City Manager.
I'd like to acknowledge our CVB and our communications department for the awards they won at the press club the other night. They really cleaned up. Won numerous first place, a lot of second place. Well, our communications department won three first place, three second place, three third place, and three honorable mentions at that, at that award. So Trace and her crew did a great job, and also the CVB. On the emergency management coordinator, the last time that was given to us by Ms. Allen, we did have our emergency management coordinator come and give city council a report, review that work and give a report. So we will have them come back and give this council a report on, on their findings and what they did, and also give you a report on our emergency warning system. System's a good word. Okay. Juneteenth went great. Thanks, Emily, and your crew was fantastic. Response efforts were good yesterday. That wasn't intense rain. Cities can really come under a lot of pressure with those type of events. Just the timing. It's five inches over two days is not bad. Five inches in 30 minutes is horrible. So thanks to our staff for responding. And lastly, congratulations, Mayor, on your election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know we have a lot to cover. I certainly want to thank everybody for coming to council as they do every week, and thank the voters for turning out, and certainly encourage people to vote more in the future and get more turnout in our city elections. It's a great privilege to get to serve as the mayor for a second term, and I take the responsibility very serious, and I will continue to work hard for all the residents of Beaumont, Texas. And the events that we've had this past week, the event staff did a great job, because there was an event Friday night getting ready for Saturday, and certainly, I'm, I'm just so proud of city staff and the strides we've made in our drainage and water and sewer over the last two years, because I've gotten to see the reduction in calls. And any call is too many, but it certainly is good when we're able to continue to improve, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. The championship for the National Arena League was won right here in Beaumont, Texas for their first year, and happy birthday to John Crenshaw. It's, it's always good to have another one. And with that, we are recessed into executive session, and we will move up there expeditiously, and I'm coming back channel six real quick.